Thank you. Good evening, folks. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Obviously, we are virtual and will be for, at the very least, I'm going to say the month of January, but we'll continue in this fashion until things start to settle down. So I know that none of us like meeting virtually compared to in person, but best to be safe. And so here we are. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as circulated, please?
Subot.
Deputy Mayor Tanner and seconded by Councilor Thorburn, did I see your hand up? Or Councilor Fager, sorry. All those in favor? You can raise our hands for this, but we'll call for yays and nays when we do the other items. So the agenda has passed. Before we begin, I will say that we are on the, we are in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are very fortunate to be here. Are there any announcements from members of council? There's not a lot going on right now. I will say that we have a proclamation. And generally, we just announced that we post these, but I will say that January 15th, 2022 is the 230th anniversary of 15 ships departing Halifax Harbor. The conditions and causes that led to the exodus of 1,196 self-liberated Black loyalists were conditions of abject institutionalization, institutionalized racism and linked to the failure of institutional, political, and societal will to fulfill the promises that were made to the communities that left for Sierra Leone. And so January 15th, 2022 is the day of Black loyalist exodus. And this is under Project 1792, recognizing the ongoing significance of the UN decade of African descent and the importance of the history of Black loyalists in Nova Scotia and how all communities in Nova Scotia continue to be affected by the historic rift of the Black community. And so this proclamation will be shared on all the social media platforms of the town as well. And I don't believe we have any delegations today. So we have the minutes of December 13th, 2021 council meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Everyone shaking their head, motion to approve the minutes is circulated. Councilor Caldwell, seconded by Councilor Conklin. All those in favor? That was opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Lots of planning items on the agenda today. So we'll start with 654 Glen Allen Drive that proposed development agreement, really the announcement of a public participation meeting, which will be virtual. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you. So staff provided to council at the previous meeting an application briefing for proposed development agreement at 654 Glen Allen Drive. It's a former Kirk Forestry site near the La Haye ballfields. The proposal includes the development of 444 dwelling units with single unit dwellings, townhouses, and multi-unit buildings with three new public streets. Typically, a public participation meeting date is included in that evening's agenda. However, there was uncertainty with the date at that time. The meeting is now being scheduled for Wednesday, January 25th at 6:00 PM, and it will be conducted virtually. There will be an ad posted in the social breaker a week prior to the meeting. As well, letters will be sent to those property owners within 100 feet of the subject property. Would-be participants can register for the meeting by contacting the Community Development Department. So council can consider this an announcement of that public participation meeting.
Muted. I'll get used to this maybe the end of next year. Are there any questions of the development officer? So pretty straightforward. That's great. So we'll look forward to more information coming from that. Seeing no other questions, application for development agreement and notice for public participation meeting for 388 King Street. And I see Ms. Childs is here.
Hello. Staff received an application for a development agreement for 388 King Street that's down kind of near Maple Street. The application was received on September 8th by Black Bay Real Estate Group. And the application is for a development agreement for a mixed-use development containing 71 residential units as well as ground floor commercial. Included in the residential units would be three townhouse units on the front, the King Street part of the ground floor, as well as the above stories. And the commercial would be a long part of the front of King Street wrapping around the side of the building and then along the back. So it would have kind of a river view. There would also be a floating dock back there that would be accessible to the public as well as the residents. The, the building would be, is proposed to be six stories plus one story of underground parking. So from the riverside, it would look like seven stories. And from King Street, it would look like six stories based on the topography. The, the lot is located in the C1 zone or the historic downtown commercial zone. And the development, the developer story is proposing 35 parking spaces, vehicular parking spaces, and 40 bicycle parking spaces. So for the C1 zone, it's required that there, as a right, there would be 0.5 spaces per unit for a development agreement that can be negotiated, but it has actually met the requirements set out in the land use by law for parking. The proposed units are supposed to be approximately 29 one-bedroom apartments, 36 two-bedroom, and six either two-bedrooms left-in or three-bedroom units. And with the application, a traffic study, a traffic impact study and a flood mitigation study were received for this. They have been analyzed by staff, but analysis is ongoing over the next stages of the development agreement process. And there is a public participation meeting scheduled for next week, Wednesday, January 19th at 6:00 PM, and that would be held virtually. So there is an ad in the paper. It came out earlier, so it does stay in person, but it will be switched again.
Wonderful. Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Just reminder to use the raise hand functionality. Councilor Thorburn.
Yes, Mackenzie, if I remember correctly, there was a development agreement proposed there, but never went anywheres for that area before. So they're going to look at the flood mitigation required to make that accessible for development?
That's right. Yeah. And that's what I believe was the hesitation with the last development agreement. So this one, yeah, flood mitigation study has been done. And would need to be, any mitigation would need to be required in how the development was built.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Mackenzie, just perhaps for those that may want to join virtually, can you just give us a quick synopsis of how they can do that?
Yes, definitely. So they can call or email the Community Development Department. There is information on our webpage right now, so bridgewater.ca/DA with the email and the phone number to contact. There is also a page right on there if they just wanted to send in some comments, but they didn't want to attend. They can do it through that page as well. And registration is required, but they can do it through there and they can contact me directly for any questions they might have as well.
And this is the same for all of them, right? There's, there's all the different public participation meetings, there's links and stuff for people sending their comments.
That's right. Yeah. So each one is individual and there's this, the report that was submitted for this, as well as the other planning applications that are coming to you tonight will all be or are already on the website. And so there's some information about each of those.
Perfect. Other questions or comments from council? Obviously, these are at their early stages, so these will come back a number of times for additional input. Okay, so we need, no, we don't need a motion. So now we have, where am I? 233 Logan Road, Michelin. Application for development agreement and notice for public participation meeting. Eric, I see, is here.
All right. Hello. Yep. So this is an application, an application was received by Michelin North America for a development agreement to construct a 3,200 square meter manufacturing facility addition at 233 Logan Road. This property is located in the industrial M1 zone and is presently a manufacturing facility. According to the application, there will be two separate additions, one 2,500 square meter addition and one 700 square meter addition. And they are proposed for the southwest corner of the current facility. Based on the design complete to date, the proposed addition will be approximately 7.7 meters or 25 feet from the property line at their closest point. And will measure approximately eight and a half meters or 29 feet in height when complete, matching the existing building height. And just like the previous application, the proposal requires a thorough review by engineering, the community development staff, against the criteria of policy IM6, which includes a review of transportation and infrastructure compatibility as well as other policies. And a virtual public participation meeting is scheduled to be held at 6:00 PM on January 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? From council on that one? Someone asked me today, 3,200 square meters, what is that? And so it's just under 35,000 square feet if I did the math correctly. So I just, I know a lot of people would wonder what that is. So it's 35,000 square feet is the addition. Any other questions? Again, this will be something that comes back. Okay. And our last item under planning is application for development agreement and notice of public participation meeting for 777 King Street and 11 Victoria Road. Mackenzie's back.
So similarly, as the other King Street development, this was an application staff received by Black Bay Real Estate Group for a development agreement for a mixed-use building. This is on the corner of Victoria Road and King Street and encompasses three properties that are there that would be consolidated into one for this development. They are proposing 75 residential units as well as ground floor commercial. And this building would be, again, six to seven stories, depending on how you look at it. The seventh story is smaller. It encompasses a rooftop patio as well as a small common area. So it will look more like six stories from Victoria Road and King Street. It's also located in the C1 or the historic downtown commercial zone. And the commercial would be on the ground floor wrapping around from King Street to Victoria Road. There would be five residential units on the ground floor at the back. It would be accessed by a landscaped courtyard off of the sidewalk and driveway that would be at the back of the building. All residential units would have private balcony, shared courtyard, or shared terrace. And the developers proposing 48 vehicular parking spaces and 41 bicycle parking spaces for this one, underground parking, as I mentioned. And similarly to the last, they have, the C1 zone requires a half a space for each unit. So those requirements have been met. And that's accessed off of Victoria Road. So similarly to 388 King Street, a traffic impact study was received as well and analyzed by staff. And the public participation meeting for this one is also next week, and it's on Tuesday, January 18th. Again, 6:00 PM on Teams.
Great. Thank you. Questions from council on this item? Councilor Caldwell.
Yes, wondering what the traffic analysis determined regarding parking.
So traffic analysis or traffic impact statement doesn't actually look at parking specifically. It looks at more of the impact of the surrounding area. So there's some kind of back and forth about sight stopping distances, like what you can see when you're leaving and if any turning restrictions or anything will be required. So that's what's looked at for the traffic impact study as well as what the type of road can handle for traffic count. So parking is actually not looked at in that. It's just looked at through the land use by law lens.
Other questions from members of council? I know I was just looking at social media before I came here, lots of, lots of comments, lots of questions from the public. I know the parking was one, so that's, that's, there's underground parking, so that's, that answers that for quite a few. I know some people asked if this meant, was going all the way back to where Weagle's Bakery is. So I know that those, those questions are ones that, you know, if people have questions, they should be reaching out to staff or members of council. We'll get those answers. But I know these are two very, the two King Street ones are very large developments. So it's, it's not necessarily what we're used to in our downtown core. So I know that's got people thinking. So Deputy Mayor Tanner, you've got your hands up.
Well, just a quick comment on your comments. I mean, I think reading the documents and browsing documents online is a good idea for people before perhaps making comments on social media to understand what it truly is that's being built and how, you know, some, there was a comment about, you know, if it's on King Street, it has to be all business. Well, as we just saw, it's first floor business and then everything else is residential at top. So it's good to read some of these documents, understand what is being proposed.
Yep, exactly. Councilor Thorburn.
Yeah, my question is the commercial space. I know we've got a development down there. It's been there for a while now on Duffin and King Street. How long do they have to have some commercial in those spaces? They're just going to lay void?
Yeah, so Victoria and King, they, I, oh, I don't have those details right now. That's something that could always be discussed in the development agreement. Often has the development agreement, a certain amount of construction has to happen in a certain amount of time. But I don't know if there would be rules as to how, how quickly that would have to be filled for the commercial, since it is just a permitted use to have in that space already.
So what you're saying then, there is really no timeline to have commercial in that space? There's not an agreement that requires that we should have a timeline on it?
Right. And so I guess too, I'll say that there is a requirement to have commercial on the ground floor based on the land use by law requirement, but the development agreement wouldn't necessarily, yeah, say that that has to be filled in a certain time.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this will be interesting to see as it goes through. Thank you to our community development team for all those kind of team effort there. Perfect. Going down to reports and recommendations, I see we have Stephanie here with us. So we have kind of the take two of the, the solid waste bylaw. So I'll turn it over to you. Oh, no. There we go. It's, it's really, it's really, really low, Stephanie. I don't. No, we're, we seem to be having the same issue we had last time with the volume being really low. Just trying to think on where the, where the settings would be for that.
Has the volume improved any?
Drastically, yes.
Okay, so in November, there was a municipal joint services board meeting whereby it was decided that there would be review by the town of Bridgewater, the municipality of Lunenburg, and the town of Mahone Bay for amendments regarding the banning of compostable bags within the organic stream and also fast food packaging that contained polyethylene liners. So these were identified as large contaminants within the organic stream. Many other areas have already banned these items as they've been identified as contaminants. So I do have a presentation and I will share that with you. So you can just kind of have an idea of just the extent of the contamination. Okay, just one moment, please. Okay, so can everybody see my first slide?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so just to get an idea, the bags that we're talking about banning are the ones that are called compostable. However, they don't break down reliably within our composting system. The issue is that they often fragment and cause greater contamination. And oftentimes, they are entirely made of plastic or they are partially made of plastic, which creates microplastic contamination if they do break down somewhat within our organic stream. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of the process that is used at the recycling center for processing organics. When they arrive from the green carts, they are processed on what we call the tipping floor for the organics. And then on the, on the tipping floor, the bags are then shredded. And as you can see from the slide, that they are actually tangled within the grinder. So this is something that caused considerable wear for our machinery because it does actually get tangled and requires quite a bit of effort to remove it. And over time, it does actually degrade the equipment. So you do see some equipment failure, and this is considerable when we do have quite high volume. It comes in every day. Here you can see one of our compost windows. The bags are obviously within the pile. They don't break down reliably. And sometimes even after a year, they're this noticeable. So you can see that there is quite a widespread impact. Here's an example of the paper cups and the contamination that they cause. So although the outside actually breaks down, the interior, which is made of a polyethylene plastic, does not break down. And right now, we do allow the, allow paper cups to be put in the organic stream, even though we do see this time and time again. And as you can imagine, when they're stacked one inside of another, there is very little potential for them to break down because it's just a barrier that is basically impermeable. Here you can see the organic screener that we use. So what we do at the end of about a year or two, depending weather conditions and how much the compost has broken down. The organics are put in a large industrial screener and contaminants are turned around and they're basically just spit out at the end of the machine. A lot of it is plastic and a lot of it is preventable plastic that could just be avoided completely. A lot of it is plastic and a lot of it is preventable plastic that could just be avoided completely in the first place. Once it's in the organics, it's really difficult to remove it. So here you can see, this is just an example of how much contamination is in there. So if you think about it, we've estimated anywhere from 30 to 50% contamination caused by plastic. That's pretty considerable. So, you know, avoiding it is obviously the best approach to this. And again, here you can see the bag fragments and the plastic that's visible after the screening process has taken place. So it's pretty considerable. So at this point, I will leave it open for questions. So the amendments are with respect to the bags, also the plastic lined cups, and any kind of packaging that does contain plastic liners. And that's basically what we're asking today, just opening up to council for further discussion about whether this is something they'd like to proceed with. Of course, there is a communication plan that's in place. The plan includes an unveiling of the communication with regard to banning of these materials and giving plenty of time for the businesses to deplete whatever inventory they may have and possibly replace it with a paper alternative. So we're, we're proposing a six-month period for this. And with that, also just contacting larger businesses that use these. So for example, many of them use liners to line their, their bins within their, their business. So they would have to find an alternative. Paper is a suitable alternative for this. And so we do have things like samples to provide to the public and also to businesses just to try it out in advance. So after the six-month period or countdown, we would be doing enforcement. And at that point, that would mean a friendly reminder and also subsequent rejection if it does persist, that people are using plastic liners or plastic compostable bags and also including the packaging. Another issue that should be raised is the fact that the municipal joint services board and the recycling center does accept compost from the town of Lunenburg and the municipality of Chester. So there would have to be some discussion as to whether they would also ban these materials in their organic stream or whether this would be something that they would do purely by education. Again, that would be a discussion that would have to take place in the future, once councils would decide. And I'll leave it there and just open it up to council for discussion.
Thank you, Stephanie. I just have a question. So we, we talked to the businesses that are impacted, so I'm assuming like restaurants, places like that. But do we talk to their suppliers? Or do we, do you know who normally they would get those, those liners from? So that they know they also have to restock the proper ones, not just like, there's no sense bringing in the ones that we're banning?
Yeah, so some of the larger ones that we're concerned with would be just directly reaching out to environmental services through, you know, for example, Michelin, the hospital. And I don't think it's necessarily our place to contact who their suppliers are. I mean, we certainly could, we could take that extra step. I think it's more so just approaching environmental services, you know, whoever is in charge of waste management for the larger businesses, but just using that six-month period to really reach out, let them know who some potential larger volume vendors are for paper alternatives. And just making sure that they know what is acceptable. So giving them some names of different products that are acceptable and then relying upon them to make the next step.
Okay. Councilor McDonald?
So you had mentioned the, anything coming from Lunenburg or Chester. I guess I kind of assumed that you would set the rules on what's acceptable and not. And if somebody doesn't, you know, everyone would kind of have to follow, fall in line with that. So that it would be a choice for Lunenburg and Chester?
It would be a choice in the sense that they would have to, if it were to be an enforceable thing, they would have to make some bylaw amendments, as is the case with Bridgewater right now. So that makes it enforceable through our bylaw enforcement officer if need be. Of course, we want to educate first of all and just let them know why we're making the switch. But this is something that certainly if they wanted to, there is enforcement funding through Region Six and divert Nova Scotia. So if they wish to, you know, to take that step, they could certainly tap into that funding for advertising, legal review if necessary, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yes, Stephanie, both Chester and Lunenburg are part of the Region Six Committee, they serve one for solid waste. So they're, they're part of Region Six, so they should have that information and they should be on board with us because they attend the meetings to know what's going on and how they can help.
Yes, certainly, and they're very supportive of our message, you know, any changes or proposals that we do make. And certainly this is something that can be discussed at the Region Six level as well. There may be other municipalities interested in following suit as well. But they certainly are supportive of funding for these types of initiatives.
Great, I'll probably contact you or Christine Will to get some information to put on our agenda for our meeting in March. And we can certainly have some discussion with all the different municipalities in Region Six. I think there's 12.
Yes, that would be wonderful, yes, certainly.
Thank you, Councilor Thorburn. Other questions from members of council? Thank you for your presentation, Stephanie, that's great. Is someone prepared to make a motion for first reading? Anybody?
Chip if, if you want.
Yes, please.
I just brought up, I would move that town of Bridgewater, Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the amendments to chapter 203, solid waste bylaws as per document 21-164, and proceed to the second reading of the bylaw at the council meeting to be held February the 14th, 2022, and authorize all staff to publish all public notice pursuant to section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Conklin. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yeah, question being called. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, so that we can make sure I'm missing anyone. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is carried. Thank you, thanks again, Stephanie.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening, everyone, take care.
You too. Our next item is citizen appointee for the Heritage Advisory Committee, recommendation to council. Is someone prepared to make that motion, please? Councilor Caldwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Amanda Rodenizer as a citizen member to serve on the Heritage Advisory Committee effective immediately for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2025.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Frasier.
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion?
A question.
Oh, question being called. Question being called, do you have a question?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, okay.
Stacy and Cheryl, how many members does that give us? We at full capacity now, or how many members do we have on the HAC committee? Do you know offhand?
I would be guessing, I think we're, I think we still have room. I don't think we're at the maximum, but I would be guessing as to exactly how many.
I think we, we.
More, yeah.
Yeah.
Up to nine, yes.
Up to nine, so what you're saying, we probably have eight.
Okay, no, that's a good question, thank you. So we have a mover and a seconder, any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion is carried, thank you. 9.3 is our monthly permit application report for November 2021. And of course, in there is the year-to-date for 2021. As things started to get towards the end of the year, it was a, when you look at the building estimates and the building permits year-to-date 2021, which was, is much busier than 2020 was. And 2020, I thought, was crazy busy. So that's there for the public's information and perusal. It'd be interesting to see December's report and the, and the final year-end numbers next month. So if there's any questions with those, please reach out to staff. 9.4 is a recommendation of Region Six Inter-Municipal Committee for the 2022-2023 Region Six budget. So that's, I don't know if we have a, if there's any, normally there's not really a staff presentation for that, is there?
I can speak a couple of words on it, your worship, if you wish.
Sure, Councilor Thorburn, yeah?
Yeah, I know this, this year, it looks like it, per person, and we have 8,532 people in the town of Bridgewater, it will cost $1.44, is what it will cost us for our share, which is 9.27% of the total cost, based on strolling on population. And for that, we'll receive $7.50 per resident or roughly $63,000, $64,000. So it's an in and a out, but we get four or five more times the value out of it than we put into it. And it's based strictly on population. Last year, our total budget was $913,830. This year, it's down to $778,025, which you'll find in, in your minutes. But that was, we have a fund there that we can put extra money in there. If needed, in last year, we put a little over a million dollars from reserves into that fund to reserve, to divert Nova Scotia, consequently, we got a few more dollars last year, I think it was around $82,000. So it's one of the things that we pay some in, but we get a lot more, plus the benefit.
Yeah, no, perfect, thank you for, for that, that's good information. And, and so just so the public is aware, when we make the motion and it says $788,000, that's across the 12 municipal units that you were referring to in the last presentation, right? So it's not that the town of Bridgewater's contribution is not $788,000. As Councilor Thorburn explained, it's, it's a fraction of that. Any questions or comments? Is someone prepared to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
Make a motion that council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Region Six Inter-Municipal Committee and approved the 2022-23 Region Six Inter-Municipal Committee budget in the amount of $788,025 as presented in document 21-181.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Conklin, was first. Further discussion?
Yes, I just looked up our share. Out of that, I think we pay $12,278 as our share, or 9.7%, your worship.
Yeah, perfect, thank you for that, that's, that's great. Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. No nays, so passed unanimously, thank you very much. Down to 9.5, recommendation of CAO contribution of relocation of on-street parking Glen Allen. So this will need some explanation, I think, for the, for the public.
So the province of Nova Scotia is investing in the Social Regional Hospital to expand and modernize that. Anyone that's been up on, near the hospital lately can see some of that work occurring along Glen Allen Drive. The, the project will involve a new entrance off Glen Allen in between where the Daisy is and Stone Ridge Court. And that, that entrance has caused us to require that they look at, I guess, a traffic impact study as well as analysis of the access point to make sure that it's a safe entrance. The on-street parking that's on the Daisy side of Glen Allen has to be removed in order to make that, that new access or entrance point safe because it obstructs the use of emergency vehicles as they're going in and out. For that reason, before the engineer can approve that access point, we, we have to require that those be removed. And both staff and council have concerns about losing on-street parking on Glen Allen, simply because it's heavily used, both by users of the hospital as well as users of Glen Allen Park. The main entrance to the park is off that, that part of Glen Allen. And therefore, we've asked that in order to enable the access to be approved, those parking spaces have to be relocated. So there's a total of nine parking spaces that are going to be lost. And the proposal is for transportation to provide a contribution that would enable us to replace six of those on the other side of Glen Allen Drive. So on the park, park side of Glen Allen Drive. And that would also involve the placement of a sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, to ensure that there is safe pedestrian movement by the, by those who park on that side. When they get out of their vehicle, they can walk down to the crosswalk at Stretch Drive in Glen Allen and access the hospital that way. The total cost to replace the six spaces is $85,000 and they're proposing to contribute $70,000 towards that. I can indicate that this was a project that was identified, that the sidewalk was a project that was identified in our capital plan as part of providing pedestrian access to Glen Allen Park in, in a safe manner. So it was always proposed that we would put a sidewalk on that side of Glen Allen Drive. This just perhaps speeds that up a bit. And the recommendation is that council accept the $70,000 contribution from the Department of Transportation as would be required in order to facilitate the relocation of the on-street parking on Glen Allen Drive to the opposite side of the road. And that will enable staff to approve the access point on Glen Allen Drive for the, for the hospital expansion. And we would undertake the work in the spring and summer of 2022. And when council receives the capital budget, they'll, they'll note that we have a couple of options in terms of replacing the parking space. There, there's the six stalls in sidewalk for $85,000. We can look at increasing the number as well. And we'll have now option for you for nine stalls at $100,000 or 15 stalls of $170,000. And, and council can decide how far they want to go with the parking and, and the sidewalk. But what's being recommended here is to accept the $70,000 for relocating six spaces on the other side of Glen Allen.
Thank you. Questions from members of council on that item? Yeah, I, I got a little nervous when we started talking about 15, 15 spaces because I know that, you know, these, these are parking spaces that, you know, I know they're for the park and, and for like the area, but they do end up being used for hospital parking. And so I'd be concerned that the creation of 15 spaces then just becomes 15 hospital parking spaces. And then to me, I would be looking for more contribution from the province. But I understand they're not, they're already not paying to replace all the spaces that are being taken away.
Yep, so we're just suggesting that you might want to, if you want to consider creating more parking spaces, there are some options that will be provided to you that you can consider in the capital budget. But right now, it's just, you're losing nine, six are being proposed to be replaced, and that's an $85,000 price tag.
Okay. Other comments or questions on that? Is someone prepared to make a motion to accept the money from the province, Councilor Conklin?
Thank you. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater accept the $70,000 contribution from the Nova Scotia Department of Transportation as the contribution required to relocate the on-street parking on Glen Allen Drive to the opposite side of the road, thus enabling the approval of the new hospital access on Glen Allen Drive to enable the town to undertake the work in the spring, summer of 2022.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, thank you. Our next item is 9.6, recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee for Emergency Assistance Grant at Bridgewater and Area Inner Church Food Bank. I don't know if there's, these are generally straightforward, I don't know if there's anyone.
Mayor Mitchell, if council has any questions, I'm happy to respond or help support.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions about, about this one? I think it's pretty straightforward. Everybody understands what the food bank does in the community and, and the grant process is quite straightforward. Would you like to make a motion, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Sure. I move that council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award an emergency assistance grant of $1,000 to the Bridgewater and Area Inner Church Food Bank.
Perfect, seconded by Councilor Conklin. Perfect. Seconded by, Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Motion is carried. Thank you. Nine point seven, new and amended policies, debt reserves, investment, tax collection, purchasing and tendering. And our Director of Finance is here to review this. And then after that, we will give notice of it coming to another meeting.
Sure. So the notice is for a number of new and amended policies. So the first one is a new debt policy, as well as an amended reserve policy and the addition of operating and capital reserve policy, a new investment policy, and amendments to the tax collection policy and the purchasing and tendering policy. So there's quite a few. Some of them just small amendments, housekeeping while we were fixing up the other ones. However, the big ones would be the reserve debt and investment policy that didn't previously exist or provide the guidance to staff to enable us to do things such as invest in something outside of a GIC, and what our borrowing limits are, and getting those established in a policy as well.
Questions from council? So I know that the presentation last week was, was very informative in terms of the, the changes in investment strategy. As you just mentioned, being very limited in what we could do before, and now being able to take advantage of very low risk still. But I think you, it might be interesting for the public to understand that before, like, we were not earning any money on any of our reserves, essentially. Or you're going to present that at the next meeting.
Sure. This is notice, so I was planning to discuss it in more detail in two weeks' time, but I'm happy to do it now, too. So.
No, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want you to have to do it twice. No.
No, but I guess now that you've brought it up, we might, now that we've piqued people's interest on the investment side, we might as well just address that. GICs typically have had a decent rate of return until the past two years, whereas our GICs that might have had a three or four percent rate of return have matured. The new rate, you know, is in the range of, you know, half a percent. And we actually earn more than that just on our checking account for the town. So having an investment policy is a key, you know, in times like this, to enable us to do things to get a greater rate of return, while also really controlling the risk and determining what kind of investments council would be comfortable having outside of GIC and a checking account. That's the shorters.
That's great. Thank you. Councilor Caldwell?
I do have a few questions. We don't mind.
Yep.
Of course. So for debt limits, so it says the town's maximum annual debt service cost will not exceed thirty percent of the town's own fourth revenue. So I'm just wondering, does that potentially buy the hands of future councils needlessly when it says it will not exceed, as, as opposed to it being a goal, or?
We cannot exceed. The province would not let us borrow in excess of thirty percent. So while we're stating it in a policy, it's also a fact. But, yeah.
And so for procurement, I don't see local defined. Is it somewhere that I'm, is it, or should it be?
I think it's in there.
It was defined. It is not the town, it is not like the town boundary. I believe it is defined in there, but I, I can take a look at that.
It's defined under, I think it's, you have to look in a section of, I think it has to be under twenty-five thousand or under fifteen thousand, because we don't, we don't have local preference over that dollar amount, because it's a percentage, right?
Yes. It's a five percent. Yeah, it's a, it's a small percent preference, but it doesn't apply to anything over that established limit that the mayor.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the numbers. I just didn't see what is local, like, is local Nova Scotia, or Bridgewater?
San Lunenburg County?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And we do, this was mentioned at the discussion sessions, Councilor Caldwell, but we do have a, a group of staff that are coming together to form a committee of staff to actually review our purchasing policy, to make sure that it's still sufficient and meets our needs, and so we can implement for some things that we're noticing causes bumps in the road and things like that, looking at the dollar limits and things like that. So that's something that will be coming forward to council, potentially after the staff review of that policy. The policies just bring and brought forward to amend a problem with another policy that contradicts it, that just should have been previously repealed. But we will be looking at the policy in more detail. So if there is maybe insufficient information on what local is, we can add that to our committee's list of things to look at.
Okay. And I'm wondering about write-offs. So is there, it, the way I was reading it, it sounds like there are certain things that could be written off without council approval, which makes sense. But I didn't see a, a dollar value, like, couldn't there be a, a certain dollar value where council did have to approve it?
Sure, council, the council can make a suggestion to change these policies. So I don't know whether we would want to look at that in two weeks' time when we review them in detail, or council wishes to discuss it this evening, but that's an option. In a lot of cases, it's just like to clear up little silly little things that happen that technically staff aren't authorized to do, but we might be doing, you know, if we have to move, tidy up. Like, I think it gives, for example, if a payment was applied to a wrong account in order to get rid of the interest on the other account, technically staff are doing that right now, but it wasn't actually captured in our policy. So we're just tidying up some policy and matching it to, you know, what's actually procedure. So, but we could certainly add a dollar limit. You know, we don't write off any tax accounts, water accounts, anything without bringing them to the commission or council. These are just really more for cleaning up of, you know, an error that gives us the authority to also fix the interest.
Just one more question. The, so the procurement value ceilings, of, you know, say two thousand or fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand, where do those come from? Are those just, like, do, do all municipalities do similar thresholds? Or is this tradition, or where do those, how are they decided upon?
Right. So I can't speak to how they were initially decided on, because the policy precedes me. But we do have trade agreements that establish the thresholds that we are allowed to have. Some of our thresholds are beneath what the province and those trade agreements will allow. That's part of what the committee will be reviewing to determine if our thresholds are too high, too low. You know, what's the, what's the allowed amount, and, and then coming to council to see what council would be comfortable with if we do recommend a higher value. It's not a lot higher in some cases, but where we might have a twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar limit, other municipalities may actually have a higher one, or the province may permit a higher value. But at the time the policy was approved, that was what council at the time would have been comfortable with, I assume.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Those are good questions. Any other questions from members of council? So this will be revisited in two weeks. Is someone prepared to make a motion to that effect? Councilor Conklin?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section forty-eight of the Municipal Government Act that at the January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two council meeting, amendments to policy, various policies, new and revised, as outlined in Document twenty-one dash one eight-seven, will be considered.
Thank you. Seconded by, Councilor Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. No. Okay, motion is unanimously passed. And we're down to nine point eight, request for grant, a grant of easements for Nova Scotia Power. And I see Mr. Brown's popped back on the screen. Nick, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. So staff present a request on behalf of Michelin concerning a rerouted transmission line and necessary easement agreements to facilitate the new location. The specific request is for the town to grant easements over our property owned at the corner of St. Philip Street and Logan Road, and over our property on the north side of Highway one oh three, each in favor of Nova Scotia Power. The one property at the corner of St. Philip Street and Logan Road is the lot in which the town, our Public Service Commission, is constructing a water booster station. The easement area, the easement corridor, would be plus one hundred feet from the booster station. And so town staff are satisfied with that separation distance. The other property on the northwest side of the one oh three will be developed with street services during the Exit Twelve A interchange project. The town will want to ensure the easement agreement includes satisfactory terms with respect to the construction and maintenance of stormwater facilities in that area. It's conceptualized by the Master Infrastructure Plan. So we have a storm pond that is shown in the master plan, being right underneath this rerouted transmission line. We're having discussions now about actually moving that to the opposite side of the street. Either way, we'll want to ensure that, that that is respected, that we can actually have a stormwater facility in that location. Also, with respect to minimum vertical separations between the subject transmission line and the new business park utility lines, staff will want to work with our consultant and NSPI to ensure proper planning and design. Therefore, it is recommended that council authorize staff to execute grant of easements in favor of Nova Scotia Power Incorporated, subject to satisfactory terms with respect to the construction and maintenance of, of the stormwater management facilities and minimum clearance distances between the rerouted transmission line and the under crossings. So I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
More a comment than a question. I just want to thank Mr. Brown for his very rapid response to some resident concerns this afternoon. So very much appreciate it. And I know he's going to reach out to them tomorrow potentially as well.
Great. Thank you. Other questions from, or comments from council? On this one? No? Is someone prepared to make a motion to authorize staff to execute the grant of easements?
I will, your worship.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yes, the council for the town of Bridgewater authorized staff to execute the grant of easements in favor of Nova Scotia Power Incorporated, with the agreements to be generally in the form included with this agenda document twelve dash one eighty-eight, and subject to the satisfactory terms with respect to the construction and maintenance of stormwater management facilities and minimum clearances between the realignment and the distribution under crossings of the connector road distribution infrastructure.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. No nays. Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Next item is nine point nine, precast concrete box culvert. Let's see, Mr. Davidson is in the building.
Good evening. I think this is only the second time I've done this through virtually, so not as comfortable, because I never look at the right screen. So I'm just here to give an update or a follow-up with the, the last time I was in, where we did not recommend the award of the box culvert, and council directed staff to, to do a request for, or tender for the purchase of, of the box culvert itself, so that we have it in stock in case of emergency. And then it will be prepared for a new ten, a tender for installation only in the spring of the, of this year. So since that time, staff have drafted the tender, and it was issued. It closed on November fifteenth. We only received one bid, which was a little disappointing. And that bid was from VJ Rice for approximately eighty-five thousand dollars net HST. Now, at the time of quoting the projects by staff, we did receive quotes for our own budgeting purposes. And the quote for that box culvert was around thirty-six thousand dollars. So that price that we would have received for supply only recently in November was over two and a half, two times more than what we budgeted originally, or forty percent of the total project budget of two hundred and eight thousand. So we did look at our options, and we did consult with, with legal on that. And the options presented to council would be to award the supply of the culvert and exceed the project, exceed, we'll say, the estimated budget for that component, not award the supply due to being over budget for that component, monitor the condition of the, of the culvert as it stands today, and then re-budget, re-tender next fiscal year for the complete work. Or the other, the third option is not award and monitor condition, and adjust the two thousand twenty-two capital budget for the purchase, the precast box culvert next fiscal year, and reissue for the tender installation only. In discussion with legal, they did say that, that we can proceed with recommended option by staff, which is, staff recommends that the request for quotation two thousand twenty-one eleven not be awarded to the lowest compliant bidder, VJ Rice, for the estimated total cost of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents net HST, and to reintroduce the project in its totality for the supply and installation of the cross culvert along King Street in the twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget.
Thank you for that. Yeah, wow, a little bit over budget. Questions or comments from council? It's pretty straightforward. It's, you know, way over budget, so. Yeah, what's the wish of council? Someone prepared to make a motion, Deputy Mayor, yeah?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff that RFQ two thousand twenty-one dash eleven not be awarded to the lowest compliant bidder, VJ Rice Concrete Limited, for an estimated total cost of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents net HST, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars pre-HST, and reintroduce the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three capital budget, sorry, reintroduce in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three capital budget supplying installation of cross culvert along King Street.
Thank you. Have a second, or please? Councilor Fager, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none. Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you very much.
Nine point one zero, disposal of pumper truck surplus fire truck. I don't know if we have a.
It's me.
It's you. Okay. See you.
The truck's back. So we, we, this is the truck that we had loaned out to Cumberland County for about a year and a half, when they had a fire at their Schumachas Fire Hall. We did have it listed in our surplus, our tender for the sale of surplus equipment. We had a minimum bid of eight thousand dollars as, as the opening, starting bid on it, and we received no bids. So we have a couple of options. I guess we can try again with going out to tender. But we do know that there is, at least, there is a fire department within the region who is in need of this particular type of vehicle. And the fire chief and deputy chief, I asked them to kind of reach out to some others to see if there was an interest. And they've come back and indicated that Hebs Cross is actually in need of one. They have, they have a vehicle similar to this, a pumper truck, but it's in very poor condition. And it's not, not every fire department can just take this truck. It has to fit in the building. And they have confirmed that it does fit within their building. Council does have a policy on, on the donation of equipment, or surplus equipment. And anything over a value of five thousand dollars requires council's approval. So we haven't had the vehicle appraised, but we know that we had a minimum bid of eight thousand dollars. So therefore, staff have determined that it has at least that value. And for that reason, it's here for council's consideration tonight with respects to whether or not council would be prepared to donate the vehicle to the Hebs Cross Fire Hall. And of course, this would, our fire department's. Of course, this would, our fire departments are, and this, of course, would occur at no expense to the town outside of the value of the donation itself.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I know that for me, the donation of fire trucks is something that happens across the province when it becomes surplus, and I know that, you know, a neighboring fire department like Hebs Cross that quickly came to our aid when we had our fire on King Street, and have come a number of times for other calls. Chances are very good that we will see that truck in our community again when we, when we have a need, so. I just, it's, it's, I think it's really important that communities across the province continue to to look at these beyond just their price tag, so I will be voting in favor of a recommendation to donate the truck. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I can make the motion in a minute, Your Worship, but we've donated trucks in the past. I think we donated one to Lapland. Certainly, the area ladder went to the fire school, and I believe we even gave an old 56 International to Tancook Island a few years back, so. Those smaller departments just don't have the funds, and although it's not recommended for a first-hand vehicle, it will add to their protection in there for that small dollar figure, and I will make that motion to donate to Hebs Cross.
Thank you. Moved by Council Thorburn to donate the 1996 Volvo pumper truck to Hebs Cross Fire Department. Do I have a second, or?
Second.
Council Frasier. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.11, we have the discussion session briefing notes from the January 4th meeting there, and those are there for council's perusal, but also for the public. Those will be posted, those are posted online. Down to business arising and unfinished business. Exit 12A construction agreement amendments.
Okay. So last fall, October 2020, council passed a motion to enter into a cost sharing agreement with the province of Nova Scotia through the Department of Transportation for the development of the Exit 12A interchange project. This project had an estimated value of $51,000, and it was a project being funded through the National Trade Corridor Fund, which has both provincial and federal contributions. The town's contribution at that time was identified within the cost sharing agreement to be $8.4 million. And at the time we signed the cost sharing agreement, the work that would be completed with, with the town's contribution plus the provincial and federal contribution was to see in phase one all of the intersection improvements to the town's intersection that would be required to accommodate traffic, increased truck traffic while the interchange and connector roads were being built. So there would be some disruption of traffic along Logan Road, and truck traffic would have to be rerouted through town. So we did those upgrades. And then phase two would see what we're starting to see now, the interchange being built, the over, the overpass, the bridge structure, Logan Road and St. Philip Street intersection upgrades, connector roads that would connect up the, the overpass structure to St. Philip Street as well as Logan Road, and that there would be sewer and water along the interchange and connector roads that would extend services out that, out to that area north of the 103 and a water booster station. So when we did the original cost sharing agreement, there weren't a lot of designs done. There wasn't an extensive study on infrastructure upgrades required. It was a quick, it was a quick agreement to apply for funding under the National Trade Corridor, and it was all very conceptual in terms of cost. Since that time, we've had an infrastructure study done, and that study identified that we would also be required to do some upgrades to our water line along the St. Philip's and High Street area, and that had an additional cost of about $2.84 million. And I, obviously, was town infrastructure. We have had some discussions with the Department of Transportation, and they have agreed to consider that work to be in-kind contributions towards the, so part of the 8.4. Essentially, the town would be responsible for undertaking the work and having the designs done and paying for that, but it would be taken off of the 8.4 as opposed to being added to the 8.4. Our contributions don't go up beyond what we've already committed, and we're able to get the water line upgrade that's required in order to facilitate servicing the lands north of the 103 as well. And the cost sharing agreement that is being proposed just kind of shows how that 8.4 would get paid. There's a certain allotment towards in-kind, and then the rest would be paid over a period of four years. And as you can see, it kind of, it's 3.54 for the in-kind, and then a million over three years, and then the last year would just be the reconciliation of that, which we estimate to be around 1.64, and that would be paid by March 31st, 2024. In exchange for all that, the town has agreed, or would agree by signing this, that we would convey the lands required necessary for the interchange and connector road to be built to the province for a dollar. So the, the interchange and the roundabouts and a little portion of the connector road would be owned by the province, so they're required to take the land that's required for that right away. And this would convey that to them for a dollar, and we'd also agree that there would be no more surprise in-kind contributions. So if something comes up after this, then they're not going to take that, whereas that would be the town's, the rest would take if it were town infrastructure. And so we just wanted to make that clear as well. So the, this was presented to council in camera session, and the cost share agreement is there for council to approve if council's in agreement to do so.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Be straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell?
Move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff that the mayor and the chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the construction agreement 2020-032, amending agreement number one, as contained in document 19-094C.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. 10.2, proposed amendments to policy 81, the flag flying policy. So these, the recommendation is being to revise it so that something that has already been approved by council does not need to continually come back to be approved year after year. It can just be approved by staff. I don't know if the, Ms. Crowder, if you wanted to speak to that?
It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. They make the application the one time, at which time council through, through this policy would approve or deny, and you don't meet the criteria. And then subsequent years, there wouldn't be the requirement for them to reapply, to take it to council. They'd still have to reapply, make the application, but staff wouldn't be required to take that to council because council's already made the determination that it meets the policy. But saves some time, and it's a little bit more responsive to those types of requests.
Yeah, perfect. Any questions on that? One, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
I'm going to change screens here. I remove that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the revised flag flying policy as presented in document 21-167 as policy 81 for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. As hand up first, further comments or questions? Um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried and is effective immediately. Thank you. 10.3, Bridgewater Memorial Arena MOU with South Shore Players. Mr. Hurdle?
All right, thank you, Your Worship. So I guess just to begin by refreshing both council and the public in terms of where we are with the former Bridgewater Memorial Arena. Council began contemplating the future use of that building, including the possible public-facing components back in late 2019. The process included the development of a feasibility study with the Acadia Centre for Entrepreneurship, as well as a fairly substantial amount of public engagement in early 2020 around the concept which essentially includes both, A, town operations perspective on the facility, so the use of the space for both parks and transit. And also, the proposal contemplated a number of public-facing elements, including renovations to the auditorium upstairs on the second floor and renovations to the main floor of the arena. So in 2020, council committed $150,000 to the operational changes in that building, so again, specifically focusing on parks and transit use by staff and town operations. In 2021, so last spring, council was asked to commit another $115,000, again, to finish off the transit and parks spaces and to do some roofing repairs. So to date, council has committed $265,000 to the renovations of that building. And during the discussion around this at budget last spring, council also asked staff to begin speaking in a more detailed level with interested parties that were potential tenants, and to begin exploring potential commitments for the public-facing spaces of the proposed renovation of the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. So during 2021, the renovations to the transit and parks space, which is essentially the old ice shed floor in the arena, were completed. Roofing materials were purchased. The roofing upgrades did not get to take place this year, unfortunately. Staff ran out of time to complete those. However, the materials have been procured, and that work will be coming in the spring of 2022. And over the course of the past number of months, staff have developed a draft memorandum of understanding with the South Shore players, which is why this item is coming to council for consideration tonight. So the MOU essentially outlines the tenants for a relationship between the Town of Bridgewater and the theater group, the South Shore Players, for the auditorium space on the second level of the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. The MOU asks both parties to signal their intent to sign a lease for a period of no less than five years for that auditorium space. And it also, following up on a point that I raised at the discussion session when this report first came to council, the social players were adamant about having Section 3.8 modified to include the fact that they are very much interested in extending beyond five years. They wanted it, clearly indicated that they were interested in down the road, a 10-year agreement, but were quite happy with the idea of renewing after the first five-year period. In any event, it provides a great deal of security for both in terms of the social players and their desire to have what they would call a permanent home, and a bit of security for council to know that there will be a primary anchor tenant in that space should they decide to invest in the renovation of the auditorium space. The MOU also includes some specifics around the intention for the lease. The intent is that the players would pay $700 per month upon the space being certified for occupancy by a Town of Bridgewater building inspector. And also upon execution of the MOU, the social players would make a $5,000 donation to the Town of Bridgewater as a good faith gesture towards the capital costs for the renovation of that space. From the town's end of things, the MOU has the town signaling its intent to prioritize $200,000 in renovations to the auditorium at the former arena in the 22-23 budget, and to make it tenant-ready. It's worth noting regarding the budget commitment that's being asked, that $100,000 of that $200,000 has already come to the town in the form of an accessibility grant that we received last fall, and council has already previously indicated its desire to see that grant put towards the installation of an elevator between the first floor and the auditorium space at the arena. And that's, you know, from a project redevelopment standpoint, that's really good because the players were adamant that having, you know, a fully accessible space for them on the second floor was, was extremely important. The full estimates are broken out on page 187 of the agenda package for any member of the public that's interested in reviewing that. And yeah, as previously noted, just that the players had asked that item 3.8 in the MOU be modified and updated, and that has taken place. And ultimately, the MOU signifies that the intent of both parties is to enter into a five-year lease, but also to negotiate subsequently to that beyond, for a second five-year period totaling not less than 10 years. So we're coming with the draft MOU to council this evening. The social players are satisfied with its contents at this point, and it's over to council for questions or comments.
Thank you, Patrick. Questions from members of council? Council Caldwell?
Yes, I was pleased to see this come forward. My only issue is with the subletting clause. So we would receive 25% of a sublet, so I just have concerns about, I'm wondering if that should be higher, and also worried that we may lose some control over the tenants in the building. Maybe we have it, we're planning to use it for another use at a certain time, or would we approve the sublets? So those are my concerns about that.
So just specific to that clause, so 3.16, the social players may sublet the auditorium space with prior written approval from the Town of Bridgewater CAO or designated. So any subletting that would take place would require the authorization of either the CAO or whoever that may happen to get passed along to within the Town of Bridgewater staff structure. Regarding the 25% counselor, this was a point that I went back and forth on a little bit with the social players. We started originally at 33%. And they came back with 25%, and a lot of that was focused solely on, the only additional cost to the town for some subletting taking place would be, you know, theoretically, the power being used, that kind of thing. And their viewpoint was that subletters would primarily be using the space and would be also utilizing the equipment of the South Shore players in there. So they were talking about sound system, lighting, that kind of thing. So they would be, from their standpoint, they were kind of taking on more of the risk in subletting because of the equipment that would be made available to subletters potentially.
Did you have a follow-up, Council Caldwell? Does that answer your question? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just also on the subletting, I assume that the subletter would just become named policy, named on the policy that the South Shore players would be taking out with regard to liability. And two, you know, we're a year and a half away technically from them taking occupancy, assuming renovations go well. Are there any, I don't know, failsafes built into this that, you know, if they were to back out at the last minute, we've invested all this money. Obviously, we would assume keep the $5,000, but are there any financial penalties?
No, there would be no financial penalties. It is a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, you know, which is essentially both parties signaling their intention. It has its limits in terms of its binding as a legal contract. We would certainly want to expedite having a lease signed with the social players to make it official. That would certainly be something that would be a high priority for staff. And just regarding insurance, that's correct. Any subletters would be a named party on the social player's insurance, and it wouldn't be any additional cost to the town that way.
I was certainly pleased with it allowing the town to use the facility without any real restrictions when the South Shore players weren't using it. I know that we would probably have some programming for, through, through parks and rec. And I would not want to have a document that limits us to the use of our own facility, because, you know, at the end of the day, it is still our facility. We would have a tenant in the South Shore players. So I was happy to see that language put in there, so that's good. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, Patrick, I didn't hear it, but at the discussion session, there was some intent on their part to want to have a 10-year lease, but we opted with five with the possibility of increasing that to 10 in due process. Was that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilor Thorburn. And, and the reality is that when we sit down to hammer out an actual lease, I mean, that initial document may come back to council as a 10-year agreement with, you know, an escalator to allow us to go back and renegotiate the rate after five years, depending on what costs of, you know, power, what the cost of power does and that kind of thing. We might want to recoup additional costs. But yeah, there's certainly, social players is very firm in their intent that they would like to be there for 10 years or more, so we'll pursue that.
Great, Patrick. I will certainly be voting in favor of that motion. Thank you.
Have we, I know this is completely off-topic, but it's the same building. Have we had any updated conversations with the farmers market in terms of the components that they were looking for at one point?
Yeah, in regards to the Yeah, in, in regards to the full-out renovation of the first floor, no, not at this time, your worship. Our intention was to, to move forward with the players sooner than later, and I think that this MOU gives us a stepping stone and a template for future negotiations regarding renovations to that first floor area that the market has expressed an interest in.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from council? Or comments? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Thorburn?
Yes, your worship. I would move that council of the town of Bridgewater authorize the mayor and CAO to direct shoot the memorandum of understanding with the social players contained in document 21-176 revised.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell comes hands, what I saw first. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to new business, our last item, 2022 municipal boundary review. It's that time of, it's a year again, but it's that, it's that time again.
Okay, so every eight years, a council, well, in a town are required to confirm the size of council. And rural municipal units confirm the size of council as well as the district boundaries and the number of polling districts that they have. So that is this year, 2022. So the town of Bridgewater is required to undertake a, a study or review of its council size. And the board in considering council size looks at population numbers as well as geographic areas. So we compare it to other towns, similar size and similar population size as well. And council also looks at things such as effective, what makes a council effective and efficient in terms of size? And those, those types of factors are also considered. To do the review, councils are required to undertake a consultation process. And that should be fairly expensive to provide everyone within the community the opportunity to provide input to council with respect to size. And at the end of the day, after consultation, council will make a decision and then it's an application to the board with respects to council size, and that has to be done before the end of 2022. We have to have the application in. And then chances are the hearing would either be late 2022 or into 2023. So at this point, it's here to let council know, we got the, the notice from the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board that it's that time. Last time council created a committee of citizen, citizen representatives that undertook the consultation and, and the review and made a recommendation brought forward to council. What I would suggest at this point is that we have no choice but to do it. So when we're doing our strategic priorities next week, this will be on the list as one of those mandatory things that we have to do. And council can refer to staff to bring back options to council with respects to how we go about doing that. Like what are some of the best practices in that area? What are other towns doing? And then we can get that underway.
Questions of the CAO? So yeah, it's something that doesn't come, doesn't come very often, like she said, every eight years, but we have to go through it. So there is a recommendation to direct staff to provide a report with options. Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, Tammy, would this be a good time to identify some of the areas in town that that come through town to serve, like Dillon Hillside Drive? I think we got a house or two on the end of that extension that belongs to Concorde Bank Fire Department, but you have to drive through Bridgewater to get to it. Is that something that could be looked at and be taken into the town of Bridgewater to make it realistic?
You mean annexing portions of outside of town and like moving the town boundary a bit? Is that?
Yeah.
This wouldn't happen under that. That's a, that's a separate process.
Oh, damn.
Yeah. Not that easy.
Okay, no. Thanks. Any other questions? Is someone prepared to make the motion? Counsel for Gier?
I'll make motion, your worship. Move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to provide a report with options with respect to the 2022 municipal boundary review.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell. Had some discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. That takes us to the end of the meeting. Counselor Thorburn, you have your hand up.
Yes, your worship. Tammy struck a bell about that dollar. Wouldn't that motion that I made for the fire truck, I think we have to sell that for, for a dollar. We did with the other ones. The fire department gives the town of Bridgewater purchase it for a dollar.
Yeah, well. We may, I'll have to look into, because we're looking at donating it. So whether or not we have to put a value to it, or they're not, they're, they're a charity. They're a registered charity. They can take donations. So I'll look to see if we need to have a dollar value attached to it, but.
No, I mean, you know, on the sale that it sold for, they give us a dollar for the vehicle. That's what happened with the fire school. That's what happened with Lapland when we gave those trucks out.
Yeah.
Having a picture, accepting a dollar for that truck.
Yeah, I can confirm with, with legal counsel that we don't, if, if we need to have the motion say a dollar, we will, but it might just be a standard legal thing they do, yeah.
I just didn't want to hold up donating the truck.
Yep.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Thank you. With nothing else before us, can I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Thorburn, seconded by Counsel for Gier. We are adjourned, and we'll just wait for Pat.